I will call the regular meeting of the board of education to order at this time, and then I ask you, please stand.
I, the legislator, signify of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need to announce that we call an executive session at 6:30 this evening for the focus of discussing personnel. And, Mrs. Layler, would you please call the floor?
Yes, Mrs. Elder.
Here. Mr. Hauser.
Here.
Mrs. Cozart. Here. Dr. Lawton.
Dr. Lawton.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Maha.
Here.
Mr. Music.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Dr. Zorich.
And Mrs. Mayans. Here. Mrs. Law- Dr. Lawton is joining us by telephone this evening because she is on vacation.
At this time, I will open the floor to hearing of Mrs. Elder, Part One. Anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board this evening on anything that's on tonight's agenda, would you please come to the podium and state your name and address. Okay, we're hearing none. I will move for adoption of Resolution Number 268 and approval of Minutes of the regular meeting held on May 28, 2013, and the committee of the whole meeting held June 18, 2013. Second. Thank you, Mrs. Elder. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 268. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the motion? All those in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's pass eight zero. Solicitors report, Mr. Mayers.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Legislative report, Dr. Lawton.
Um, do I just like you to urge everybody to talk to the resident that apparently makes sure that that um, they didn't have that vote, so he wants me to agree that the charter builds four and six percent to our net vote, so we should bring that.
Okay, so Dr. Lawton is asking that we contact our residents about each side of the charges. Okay, we're going to change the order of the agenda slightly this evening because of Dr. Lawton, so we are going to turn it over, Mrs. Elder, for finance. Thank you. I'm going to combine from the motion, and I understand that Mayne is going to repeat what I say so that Dr. Lawton can hear it. I'd like to combine Resolution Number 275 to approval of the Treasurers' Report, Number 276 approving the payment of bills, and Number 277 approving the budgetary transfers, and move for adoption of those three items.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Dr. Lawton. Mrs. Elder is bundling Resolution Number 275 to approve the Treasurers' Report, Resolution 276 to approve the payment of bills, and Resolution Number 277 to approve the budgetary transfers. We have motion in a second moment. We have any questions, discussions, or comments on this resolution? All those in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's pass eight zero. I move for adoption of Resolution Number 278 to approve the insurance renewals for 2013 by '14. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 278. Dr. Lawton is approval of the insurance renewals for the 2013-2014 school year. Any questions, comments, or discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, that also passed. I wanted to add something if I may. It should be noted that these are all the same, right, Mr. Moore? As what we discussed last time.
Yes, there are.
She knows what these are. She has not voted on something she's. Mrs. Elder wanted you to know that they're all the same as what we discussed last week.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, vote again. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes eight zero also. And combining Resolution Number 279, reenactment of the FID 11 taxes, with Number 280, the reenactment of per capita taxes, and moving for adoption of those two resolutions. Second. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 279, which is reenactment of the FID 11 taxes for the 2013-2014 school year, and Resolution Number 280, reenactment of the per capita taxes for the 2013-2014 school year. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That also passed, eight zero. I move for adoption of Resolution Number 281 to approve the extension of Section 125 cash benefit cap, and that is the same provision that we've been offering under. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 281, which is approve the extension of the Section 125 cash benefit cap. Mrs. Elder noted they are the same provisions as what we've been offering. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes eight zero also. I move for adoption of Resolution Number 282 to adopt a general operating budget in the amount of $49,624,186.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 282, which is adoption of the 2013-2014 general operating budget in the amount of $49,624,186. Any questions, discussion, or comments? Hearing none, we need to welcome, please, Mrs. Layler.
Yes, Mrs. Elder.
Yes. Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Mrs. Cozart.
Yes.
Dr. Lawton.
Dr. Maha.
Yes.
Mr. Music.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
Mrs. Mayans. Yes. That also passes eight zero. I'll move for adoption of Resolution Number 283, approval of the millage levy for 2013-14, to raise that to 77 mills.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 283, which is approval of the millage levy for 2013-2014 school year in the amount of 77 mills. Any questions, discussion, comments? We should all be clear that this is a one-mill raise. Mrs. Elder noted that this is a one-mill taxing. There are nothing yet, I will call them, Mrs. Layler. Yes, Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Mrs. Cozart.
Yes.
Dr. Lawton.
Here.
Dr. Maha.
Yes.
Mr. Music.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
Mrs. Elder.
Yes.
That passes eight zero. I'll move for adoption of Resolution Number 284 to authorize the homestead-armstead exclusion extension.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 284 to authorize the homestead-armstead exclusion extension. Any questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes eight zero also. I'll move for adoption of Resolution Number 285, approval of fund grants from the Dr. and Mrs. Williams to this fee fund in the amount of $2,175.55.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 285, the approval of the Dr. and Mrs. Williams to this fee fund grants totaling $2,175.55. Any questions, discussion, or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes eight zero also. I'll move for adoption of Resolution Number 286 to approve the increase of school lunch prices to, with elementary going from $2 to $2.10 per day, and secondary from $2.30 to $2.40 per day.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 286 to approve the increase of school lunch prices, elementary going from $2 to $2.10 a day, and that, and secondary from $2.30 to $2.40 per day. Any questions, discussion, or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes eight zero also. I'd like to combine Resolution Number 287 and 288, and move for adoption of the tax exoneration and approving the term life and accidental death and dismemberment insurance renewal.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt two resolutions, 287 and 288, one being the tax exoneration, and the other one to approve the term life and accidental death and dismemberment renewal. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
I hate the per capita tax, but it's seconded. Just don't help her.
Mr. Palmer noted that he makes the per capita tax.
Put the purple patch.
What?
The purple patch.
With a purple patch.
Duly noted. Annually noted.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Both of those resolutions pass eight zero. And finally, I move for adoption of Resolution Number 289 to approve the Edgeway Teacher Evaluation Portal, which is going to cost us an annual licensing fee of $4,902. Second. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 289 to approve the Edgeway Teacher Evaluation Portal at a cost of $4,902 annually. Any questions, discussion, or comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes also eight zero. Thank you. Thank you. Finance is now concluded, Dr. Lawton.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
You guys want to go ahead?
Looks ominous. Thank you. Now we'll go back to the first page of the agenda, please, for education and planning. I will move for adoption of Resolution Number 269 to approve the Excela Health Behavioral Health Sciences Services Agreement. Second. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 269. Any questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes eight zero. I will move for adoption of Resolution Number 270 to accept the tuition student as listed on your agenda. Second. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 270. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That also passes seven zero. And I will bundle Resolutions, Number 271, which is to approve extended school year with a face school, 272, to approve cooperation if you come to St. Francis University, and Number 273, to approve a step-up assembly program. Second. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt three resolutions, 271, 272, and 273. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's all pass seven zero. And I will move for adoption of Resolution Number 274 to approve textbook AP Spanish Language and Culture. Second. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 274. Any questions or discussion on the motion? You have to pose a stand. I know, I did it. All those in favor, please say c, c. All those in favor, favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes seven zero also. That includes my report on education and planning, and then we move to adoption of Resolution Number 291. On page seven. Mrs. Cozart. On page seven.
Got to catch up, sorry. All right, I move for the adoption, move to the adoption of Resolution Number 290 to recommend the approval of the change orders to the Greater Olympic School Authority as listed.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 290. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the motion? All those in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, that passes seven zero.
I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 291 to approve the renewal of the anti-dancing system with Oz and the rest.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 291. Any questions, discussion, or comments on the motion? All those in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
And the next meeting of the public supply committee will be July 11, 3:30. I think it's seconded. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Cozart. Student activities and recreation from Dr. Lawton. I will move for adoption of Resolution Number 292 to approve, approval of the sports and mandated physical examinations. Second. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 292. All those in favor, any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And I will turn it over then to Mr. Mears, who has some quick news.
Can I hand you a, just, a sheet that you're, hey, well, tonight, we were just informed this week that the Westmoren Sports Network was broadcasting local games. Yes, all of baseball is around broadcast. Did their annual selection, and one of our players, Olivia Peter, our pitcher, was selected as the player of the year. And that was a nice accomplishment for Olivia. And it's the first time, as you're reading there, that La Trobe's ever had the player of the year. And it's ten people selected, and Shelby Knoll, who was an underclassman here, was also in the top ten. So we have two of the top ten with the player of the year being Olivia Peter. But that would be interesting to share. We just found out yesterday. And just a reminder, Steeler Night is August 2nd. And they are adding, they called, this is White Night, I guess Friday, said they will be adding, they have a drum line now. This is Perstealer Drum Line. And they will be bringing that drum line, they're working with us to set up logistics of it to Steeler Night here in La Trobe. Basically, to warm up with them too, because they're gonna, I guess, I guess this drum line brings them on the high steel. So they would like to bring them here for Steeler Night, and bring the team out and fill with the drum line. So, I guess it's like thirty drummers strong, it's pretty big. I looked at Google today, YouTube videos of it, they're all black people. I mean, it actually is a drum. So that's something cool to add to the event. And I think it's safe to say the city of La Trobe started to do the Steeler Fest also, they confirmed that today. Some type of Steeler Fest again, or a day. The calls are coming together quickly, and in July, I'll be in touch with all of you. I don't think, I don't think that was happening.
And we're hoping that maybe our drummers and our band can get part of the trouble. Yeah, we're definitely serious.
I'm trying, that's, it's hitting some resistance for reasons that I'll tell you. But they didn't say no, they just, they said anything about that. Because I think that they're trying to put their shoulder in practice with us.
Um, no practice.
But they didn't say that, they said nothing about that. So that would be cool though, too, to have our drummers.
Thank you, Mr. Mears. We have one more resolution under student activities and recreation. I will move for adoption of Resolution Number 293 to approve, the approval of the dental exam. Second. Thank you, it's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 293. Any questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor then of adopting Resolution 293, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes seven zero. That concludes student activities and recreation, and Dr. Zorich is not here. So, let me see. I will bundle Resolutions 294, 295, and 296. 294 being to approve a free and reduced price meal policy for next school year. 295 being to approve the national school lunch program. And 296 being to approve the national school breakfast program. Second. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt three resolutions, 294, 295, and 296. Any questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's pass seven zero. And I will move for the adoption of Resolution Number 297 to approve the professional services agreement for La Trobe Area Hospital, Excela Health. Okay. Doing business at Excela Health, La Trobe Hospital. Second.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 297. Any questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes also seven zero. And we go to the immediate unit. I will, I will move for adoption of Resolution Number 298 to accept the WIU impact grant directed to technology use with life skills students. Second. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 298. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Could we ask what that's about?
Um, one of the teachers applied for a grant to purchase two ITs to use with life skills students. To assist them in learning life skills.
Thank you. Yeah, IU, by the way, has a foundation, and you can apply for these things.
They're small grants, yeah.
Yeah, small grants for things like this. Any other questions or comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes also seven zero. That ends the intermediate report, and I will go to BWCTC Joint Operating Committee. Mrs. Cozart.
Yes, I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 299, notice of intent to adopt policy number.
Why is this? You're the Mrs. Elder, I'm just waiting. No report. I got all the time. Sorry, sorry. It would be nice to have somebody else doing the ball. I'll move for adoption of Resolution Number 299, notice of intent to adopt IU first reading of policy for naming school district facilities. I hear second, second. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 299. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the motion? We're all, everybody's question is answered after reading the policy. You have one, Mr. Palmer? That's okay? All right. Thank you.
I'm seeing all right today.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes seven zero. Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Transportation, Dr. Maha.
We still got, we still have to be, we're, yes. The meeting tomorrow is scheduled for all of us. And, uh, progress is very nicely with the hiring of our host drivers.
Are the interviews still going on for that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Lawton, not, I believe, or second interview, or? Yeah, they're through the second interview phase, they've now actually signed quite a few drivers' contracts. They're not quite finished yet, but where it is in the twenties already, so twenty-eight, thirty. So they're, they're, they're on the way. They're sure to do applicants, say that. They're number sixty, I believe. And then, who's Dr.?
Thank you very much, Dr. Maha. Technology, Mr. Palmer.
Uh, report, Madam President, Potter. Our next meeting is August 18, 6:00 P.M. here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's recommendations, Mrs. White.
I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 300, which are the reservations listed.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 300. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution Number 300, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I will abstain. That will be six, zero, one.
I ask the board to move on Resolution Number 301, which is the professional personnel appointments. I will note that all of these employers are due to retirements or people leaving the district for personal or other work-related employment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 301. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the motion? All those in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously, second. Oh, in my estimation, I'm sorry, six, zero, one.
I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 302 to classify support personnel recommendations on this new one.
Seven.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 302. Questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes seven zero.
And I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 303, which is the approval of the teacher leader positions for the 2013-14 school year. We will note that there are two blank at this point, the junior high social studies and the senior high mathematics, and hopefully we will have names for those that we approve in upcoming months. So move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 303. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the motion? All those in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 304, which is the hourly rate for the classified personnel.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 304. Questions, comments, or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously, second.
I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 305, which is the granting of tenure of the three employees listed.
No move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 305. Questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That also passes seven zero.
And last, I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 306, which is an annual resolution to give the superintendent permission to realign staff.
Second. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 306. Questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes also seven zero. Under other business, please note the upcoming board meeting dates. We have only one meeting in July, and that's on the 23rd at 7:30 with an executive session at 6:30. Then the August dates are the 13th and the 20th, again, with executive session at 6:30. And the September are on the 10th and the 17th, again, yes. And we're canceling the July Finance Committee meeting, but the meet, the August meeting will be happening, or anything?
Cool.
First Wednesday in August, at 10:00 a.m. Did everybody catch that? The July Finance Committee meeting is canceled, and the next meeting will be the first Wednesday in August at 10:00. Anything else? And Steeler Night, as Mr. Mears already reminded us, is Friday, August 2nd, 2013. Any other business to come before the board this evening? Then it is time for hearing of visitors, Part Two. Then it is time for hearing of visitor's part two. If any one in the audience wishes to address the board on any matter, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Hearing none, and we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adjourn. Any questions for discussion or comment on that motion? All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
We will come for all of them.